I'd like to call or order to the February twenty six, twenty twenty four meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Denotti, can you do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Kenny, can you do the invocation, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you so much for allowing us to gather here tonight, Lord. We just pray and ask for your peace. Your guidance and your wisdom, Lord, and everything that we do, Lord, and everything we serve our hand to, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Request to postpone agenda items in additions to leases or changes in the order of presentation. I did get an email earlier from Mr. Powers that he will be like to remove some stuff off the agenda. And I'm going to on the consent agenda and I will be moving it to after nine A and B, it's going to become ten now. So the things that we'll be removing is R twenty twenty four dash oh four, R twenty twenty four dash oh five, R twenty twenty four oh six, R twenty twenty four dash twelve, and R twenty twenty four dash thirteen. So that will become ten A, B, C, D, and E. And then we will switch public hearings to eleven and so forth to the end. Can I get a formal approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move the so said consent agenda items to ten A, B, C, and D.
Okay. All in favor? County Administrator updates.
Yeah, a few updates for you this evening. One, if you were watching from home, you would have seen at the beginning of the meeting a link to take the community center feasibility study survey. So if you didn't see that, or if you're hearing the crowd and you haven't yet, we're conducting a need survey for the possibility of a community center. So you can go on our probably easiest way is either our social media or go on Powhatan County Parks and Rec's website and you can take the survey there. Then wanted to update you on a few capital projects that are moving along. We have put out or are about to put out invitation for bids for the Company One Fire Department expansion. That one is out. The village building re-roofing, so this building here, we recently completed HVAC upgrades, still need to do some of the roofing. So that request for bids invitation for bids is currently live. And then the Turner Park concession stand project expect will be putting out the invitation for bids this week. So those three projects moving along. Then this past weekend, we held our annual amnesty day for tires and appliances. So I want to thank the Anti-Lither Council and all the volunteers and staff that helped with that. Looks like we collected nine hundred and fourteen tires for proper disposal as well as ninety appliances. So a great turnout from the community and again, thanks to everybody who puts that on each year. Then we we received a grant to do a one-year pilot study or actually a one-year pilot program for micro transit. Partnering with GRTC, it'll be not a bus, but like a large van. And they'll be doing pickups. You can use the app scheduled to be picked up. It's a zone around the village area. We'll put out maps and everything later. And then you can be taken to doctor shopping, whatever you need to do either within the village area, along Route sixty all the way out to Westchester Commons. So that's going to be branded as the link program. They're going to start doing some driver training possibly as early as this week. So if you see the link vehicle around the community, that's what it is. And we expect service to start as early as March twenty fifth. So we're waiting for some final information and marketing materials from them, but we'll very soon be putting that out on our website, social media, distributing it to different agencies and groups within the county. Again, it'll be a one-year pilot program, so we'll kind of evaluate it as it goes. And then last thing I had was FY twenty five budget will release our first draft county administrator proposal tomorrow. So that will be available on the county's website under finance tomorrow. And that'll kick off the budget season and we'll be having plenty of workshops and meetings as we work on that, get the public's input before adoption. So those are my updates this evening.
That that brings us to our first public comment period. Just a reminder that there's a sign in sheet on the back table for to speak during the public comment period and for the public hearing also. So that brings us to public comment number one, Mr. Carl Schwinneman. You have three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing the group.
Hello, I'm at seventeen twenty seven, Tree Lane. I have good news. This Friday, I met with the supervisor Mark Miller of Chesterfield County and the in the the county administrator of Chesterfield and the leader of the Parks and Rec Department in Chesterfield. And they are very, they were very interested in converting the Tidewater and Western rail bit into a rail trail. And what they're going to do is they're going to convert, they want to look into converting a section of it down by Epps Plantation into a new bike path, into a section of bike path. And they're going to do, and what I'm going to do is they're going to collect more maps and look at more documents on the old railroad. And I think Powhatan should do something towards its section of Tidewater and Western. I also have good news. Two grants have opened up. The first one is a parks grant from the state of Virginia that'll that will allow Powhatan to buy new parkland or buy sections of a former railroad bed to turn in former sections of buy pieces of land to turn into trails such as the Tidewater and Western. And the Safe Streets for All grant is now open for the road sidewalks.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Lane Hall.
I'm Lane Hall, seventeen forty six, Old Powhatan Estates. Thank you all for serving Powhatan County. I am hopeful that this new beginning will bring transparency, open communication, and cohesiveness amongst the board members. One of the board's first decisions already has me concerned, though. Requiring us citizens to sign up to speak before the meeting appears to be an attempt to silence the citizens of Powhatan County you're here to represent. What about those who arrive late? Will they be silenced because they got off work too late to be here by six o'clock, which is really hard to do for some people? Often, I, as well as others, have been motivated to speak after hearing the presentation by the applicant. It's hard to know what to say before the facts of the case are presented. When our neighbors speak up, it often moves us to come forward with our own thoughts and opinions. I sincerely hope they rescind this requirement. What purpose does it serve except to exclude the citizens of Powhatan County for speaking up? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. For that being said, because this is a new process and it is a new way to talk to do public comment. If anybody else would like to speak for this first public comment, they're allowed to come up to state your name and your address, please. And again, it's three minutes for individual, five minutes for a group.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Sarah Cook and I live at twenty two, twenty one Autumn Oaks Lane. I asked for five minutes because I speak on behalf of a personal story of my own, as well as We the People grassroots. So the purpose of me speaking today is to talk about fiscal responsibility as well as the welfare and safety of children within our community, including my own child. In twenty twenty, there's a police report as well as a documented video footage of my daughter, an attempted abduction of my daughter at Walmart. I've reached out to the police and, you know, basically was dismissed in one way or the other. Shortly thereafter, I had a deputy come to me and tell me that my child was not the only one and that there was a child that was abducted just outside of Powhatan County lines from a church. And fortunately, that child was found at the home of a woman. And with that, you know, my issue is you see something, you say something. If you know something, then you say something. We need to take our constituents more seriously when there are matters going on. And I understand that the police department may have more information than some of us. However, this is a serious thing that we can put a soft alert to our community when there are concerns going on in our community. And fast forward to today, because there are some items that I will speak to any of you all, I'm happy to speak to you all about that are going on behind the scenes that I will speak offline because of the subject of the matter. However, affiliated with my grassroots, since June twentieth, twenty one, when I spoke against critical race theory and there was national news articles, I have encountered things that would be beyond your wildest imagination that include a letter that goes all the way up to the top of the administration, which is Joe Biden. As I said in that first hearing, he had come back from Russia and he said, we are to yield our rights to the government. And I'm here to remind each and every one of you all that we do not yield our rights to the government. Not to speak is to speak, not to act is to act. With that, there has been a second CPS charge against my family and me personally recently. It's an arbitrary investigation and to understand my experience, I worked for the Federal Reserve. I was one of twelve ethics and compliance professionals. Within that role, I was responsible for keeping the Federal Reserve out of the newspapers. I was responsible, basically, the way I examined our bank examiners examine banks. I examined our examiners to ensure that there was no conflicts of interest or violations to the law. I know how to do an investigation. I am very well depth and the Board of Governors found my program to be the best in the Federal Reserve system. And in that, I was asked to go to the Chicago Bank to implement the same program. When I say that this was an arbitrary investigation, I mean that to the fullest extent. I'm calling for the firing of Kelsey because not only is it what she has done to my family and she has been irresponsible, unresponsive, lack of communication, where the school, Vicky Hurt, Dr. Tiggen, and the principal and everyone involved has been swift and handled this matter within a matter of two days. I just connected by email. I applaud our county administrator Brett, as and sorry for using your first name, as well as the deputy county administrator. I have met or I met with the deputy county administrator who took my concerns very seriously and with a lot of empathy. I did receive an email from CPS today. I still do not know if I have rights to be alone with my children over an arbitrary investigation. And that is terrifying, one, as a parent, that CPS has that type of authority. And again, I say that we do not yield our rights to the government. I will not let them threaten me or my parental rights. They're already talking about forward action on how they're going to handle when they can't even answer twenty questions of mine that should have been part of that investigation. This is unacceptable and it is scary for one as a parent that the government has that type of authority and also not to consider that this is now systemic because this is the second arbitrary investigation against my family. And for it not to be considered that I have a large following of twenty five thousand followers on Instagram and I am a We the People grassroots, which is global. This needs to be taken into consideration. And I ask again for the firing of Kelsey. I don't recall her last name. But with that, you know, excuse me. We also need to fiscally be prepared that we have a great county administrator and a great deputy county administrator that I just met today. And I applaud the board for if there was any involvement, neither of their hirings, I do not know. However, we need to be more responsible in the hiring, in the streamlining of processes. Because the more we grow, like Starbucks coming in here, which I'm still surprised that Starbucks is here. But we need to be more careful because we're opening up the door to lawsuits.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak for public comment? If you're here for the public hearings part, there is a sign in sheet for the public hearing and for public comment number two, so. Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close public comment. Brings us to appointments.
The first we have planning commission liaison. So this is, some localities have a board member kind of serving as an ex officio member of the planning commission or just being the official designee to attend those meetings and kind of be a conduit for information between the two. Two of the localities have previously had those such positions. And in my experience, I found it worked really well to kind of transfer information between the two bodies and keep some continuity. So I know you've all expressed some interest in creating that. So again, I think that's a great idea so that you appoint one of your own.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Powers.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Kenny for that position. He's expressed interest in doing it and I applaud him for doing so. And I would ask for us as a board to endorse and support him in that request.
Second down. Everybody good? Any real call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Sir? I was just told that we need to adopt the consent agenda, so I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please.
Second that.
All in favor? So before we get to the Economic Development Authority, I've received a letter that I'm going to read to the audience, to our constituents. Dear Steve, with affiliation dating back to the early nineteen eighties and a somewhat bittersweet departure, I am resigning from the Powhatan County Economic Development Authority effective as of today, February twelfth, twenty twenty four. It's been an honor to serve the board member as a chair and vice chair both the Industrial Development Authority and the EDA over the past forty plus years. Our accomplishments are numerous and our work in conjunction with the Powhatan Board of Supervisors and county staff has been partnership of which we can all be proud. Some of our efforts in recent years included a bond issuance of forty nine point four million dollars in twenty sixteen, Economic Development Strategy Plan in twenty seventeen, a bond insurance of nine point seven million in twenty eighteen, the River Lake Link Group Economic Development Study in twenty eighteen, shepherding ownership and management of the Urbahn Road Fire Station, Pocahontas Landmark Center Study and Recommendations, Membership Funding in the Capital Region Small Business Development Center, Winterfield, Powhatan County Entry Signage, Study Review and Recommendations of the Economic Development Site Options, Both Acquisition and Public Private Partnership, Development of Powhatan County Logo. It's been a privilege to work with dedicated EDA board members, both past and present, as well as numerous Board of Supervisor members and county staff over these many years. Under the leadership of Frank Rennie and with the Board of Supervisor's support, the ADA has tremendous potential and a very bright future. With Frank's leaderships and vision of the EDA board members, many positive opportunities lie ahead. I wish you well as a county resident. Look forward to benefiting from your future achievements. Sincerely, yours in service, Daniel G. Jones.
So with Mr. Jones resignation of his position, we have vacancy on the EDA. So this one, his was going to be coming up for expiration here, beginning of the summer as well. So this we're recommending, just go ahead and appoint a full four-year term. We have a couple of applications which are in your packet.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Powers.
I would like to the board to consider and appoint Chris Schust to that position on the EDA.
Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
Real call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Chris. That brings us to our items that were without consent agenda. Brings us to ten A, R dash twenty twenty four dash oh four.
Yeah, so this was budgeting and appropriating a number of different funds from the Grants Fund. One of them, I think of specific interest was the National Opioid Settlement Funding as well as the OAA Opioid Abatement Authority Cooperative Grant. So this, there's a couple of large national settlements settlements with pharmaceutical firms. So in acknowledging their role in the opioid epidemic, they have settled across the nation. So localities are getting some of that settlement money, Powhatan as well. It will, you know, over the years, it's it's sounds like a lot of the money, but if we don't have a good, well thought out plan, it'll it'll be used up quick and maybe not in the best way. So what we've suggested and applied for and been awarded is a planning grant to actually sit down, work with the communities, all the different stakeholders, the nonprofits, everybody that kind of deals in this world and work out a plan for the best way to make the most use out of those funds. So the first transfer relates to that. So we're working on that now. Then the second, there's also a regional pot of money that localities can get together and propose and get money from that. We have partnered with Chesterfield and Colonial Heights. And this is attributing our portion of that, so twenty eight thousand roughly of our opioid funds would go towards matching that, which then would leverage, we believe, over a million dollars from that regional fund back through the county. And we're talking about doing information outreach, have mobile treatment and possibly expanding Narcan. So those are some of the things we're doing with that. And again, that strategic plan for what more we can do to help with opioid will be working through the strategic plan that will be coming.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Any comments?
And these, all of these, if if the board's okay with them, we will need each of these approved.
Okay.
Since they're off consent.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
R two oh four, two four dash oh four.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolution R twenty twenty four dash oh five, School Capital Maintenance Reserve Policy. We have for a while had a policy that unspent revenue at the end of the year goes into a capital reserve fund. With schools, we do the same and that fifty percent of that would be set aside for only new construction or renovation. The board would have to approve that. We're recommending just removing that requirement. The school board, whatever they want to do with those funds, they have to pass a resolution. So first, the school board has to work with superintendent and they have to get agreement. Then it comes before you all and they'd be working with Finance Department and myself. And then ultimately, you all as well would have to approve that. So there's, we feel plenty of communication and transparency. And ultimately, you all do retain the same amount of control as you would with the other. Just the needs are such that it's unlikely that we build that up to build another school or so. We don't have one on the horizon where there's other needs, nonrecurring needs for things like lighting, furniture, other stuff that these funds could go towards. So we're recommending relaxing that policy, but again, you still maintain the same amount of fiscal control that you would have with or without it.
Thank you, sir. Board comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kenny.
I can make a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty four dash oh five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolution R twenty twenty four dash oh six, Amending the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four Powhatan County Operating Budget by Budgeting and Appropriating Two Hundred and Sixty Four Thousand Seven Hundred and Forty Nine Dollars in School Grants Fund. This is essentially a pass through of grant funding we received for school-based mental health services. The schools plan to partner with the Goochlin Powhatan Community Services Board to provide such services for students in the school system. Although it's the Goochlin Powhatan Community Services Board, it's a regional group, all of this funding would be allocated for just Powhatan. It's not going to that main group and then being split up fifty fifty or anything. This is all for Powhatan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Powers.
Mr. Charlie, that all that money is Powhatan money.
Any more board comments?
Chair, I'd like to move that we accept R twenty twenty four oh six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then resolution R twenty twenty four dash twelve, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement for the acquisition of school buses. So this, it's not a lease, like you might usually think of the the term where you're renting or paying for a vehicle and then you you turn it in at the end of two years or so. It's just, just the way local government purchasing finance works is basically that's what we would call a car loan. So these are vehicles that the schools are purchasing and that's the the preferred procurement method.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Denai.
How many, how many are released?
Ten, ten, right. Yeah, ten.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Powers.
So the, any, any buses that we're considering in the CIP moving forward, the same mechanism will be used to acquire them?
Yeah, I would assume so. I'm not sure if we've ever looked at bundling them with with other borrowing, but I would assume so, yes.
Any more board comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Morset.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R dash twenty twenty four dash zero seven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then resolution R twenty twenty four dash thirteen, placing the Department of Social Services under authority of the Deputy County Administrator. Several years ago, prior to a change, we had an administrative Social Services Board where the board appoints those members and social services essentially operates under the authority of that board. Several years ago, the board changed it so that they became an advisory board where there, there is still a social services board, but they're essentially just that advisory to you all and the administrative functions of it, which is officially known as the Administrative Board, is the county administrator overseeing that under, under our programs. So I've been doing that for a few years. We have a great deputy county administrator, Mr. Will Hagy. Does a really good job with the other duties, public works, facilities, parks and rec, but social services is his background. Has over a dozen years of experience in that arena. When he came to us previously, he was Director of Social Services for County of Sussex. I came up through more of the planning, building, development side, so he has more strength than that in the social services than I do. So frequently advise him and get his counsel on items, which doesn't make us efficient. It would be more efficient if somebody with that expertise is actually directly over it. So, but again, just the way the state sets it up and we have to actually designate that person as the board, it would require your action rather than, it was a different department that you, I would just delegate that requires action from you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Powers.
You, you are the board.
Correct.
And now he's the board.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
More board comments?
Make a motion to approve R twenty twenty four dash thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Our first public hearing of the evening is ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two, amending section seventy dash one of the county code. So this was one, we have an abatement tonight. That one's larger, so would have had to have come to you regardless. But the most of them we get are smaller amounts. These are things that either through error or different assessments, somebody has been overtaxed. So we need to give them a refund. It's money that's owed to them. Anything currently over twenty five hundred dollars, they have to apply. We have to get it on the Anything currently over twenty five hundred dollars, they have to apply, we have to get it on the, or the agenda, that, that takes time, that's additional red tape. The state has increased that limit to ten thousand. So at suggestion of our Commissioner of Revenue and our Treasurer, appreciate them bringing this idea forward. We're recommending you increase that limit so it expedite getting the money that's due to those taxpayers back to them more quickly and with less red tape and work. So we're recommending approval of this.
I will open up the public hearing for Ordinance twenty dash twenty four dash oh two at this time. Have no one listed for that, so close the public hearing for that and open it up for board discussion. Comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I moved it, oh, twenty twenty four oh two B. Accepted as, as, as read here.
Second.
We'll call Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Denai.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mrs. Morissette.
Aye.
Mr. McClellan.
Aye.
The last public hearing of the evening, Ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh three, Granting a Conditional Use Permit. Sean Clendenon, Planner Two, will present on this.
This is a Conditional Use Permit for a halfway house on the property of Tax Map forty three dash forty two B, known as eighteen hundred Stonehenge Farm Road. This is a private road located in District One. The property is approximately three point four nine acres in size and is listed as rural areas in the twenty twenty one Future Land Use Plan. Additionally, the applicant has agreed to alter the application by limiting the number of permanent residences to twelve, to upgrade the existing septic system to accommodate those twelve residents and to pump the existing system monthly until the upgrade is completed and to provide county staff annually with the Virginia Association of Recovery Residences annual inspection report. After assessing the feasibility of the project and hearing public comments from the community for and against the proposal, staff concurs with the Planning Commission's decision to deny approval of the Conditional Use Permit. If you have any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Denai.
Sean, can you tell us when they requested this change?
The, the change to the number of people in the?
Yes.
So this, I want to say it was last Tuesday. At, at that time, got, got an email that evening, so that's why it wasn't in the staff report. But that's why I was mentioning it specifically in here.
Do you have a timeline perhaps of when we found out this occupant was in operation versus when they started in operation?
Yeah, so I think we found out around, or at least we were first hearing reports of this maybe the case back in the summer. I want to say end of July, maybe beginning of August, something like that. And then there's, takes a little bit of time to actually be able to confirm that. But after we were able to speak with the owner and, and the applicant here, we were able to confirm that they were operating as such. But I think that they stated that they were in operation since February of last year.
Chair.
Goodness.
So what, what's the limit on the number of people that can, can be in the house under this, under the terms of this, of the, of a halfway house?
For, for this specific application?
They, they were at fifteen, they, and then went to twelve. Is there, is there a limit in the code to how many can be in the house?
No, not in the code. They're, they're giving that probably primarily because it's, there's going to be limitations on what the building department would allow as well as the health department would allow. So that, that's where it's going to be, you know, more difficult to have such a large number of people in there. I, I will add that they, they did give us engineered plans for that twelve person one. So it appears as though that, that the health department would approve that.
Pending the septic system coming to, coming up to grade.
Exactly.
Do you have a sense of what they've committed to having that, that work done?
When it would be done by? So I think this says that they would pump it monthly until it would be done, but I, I would guess, and they're here today, so you could ask them in, in probably a few months, I would guess.
Did the system fail because of the main tank or is the actual system not able to accommodate the load?
N- no, I don't know that the system has failed at all. I, I think it's just the health department sets a limitation in a septic size based off the number of bedrooms. But in this situation, you know, they're above that number right now in people who are residing in the home. And so that's why they would need to get a system, a septic system upgraded to accommodate for that larger number.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kenny.
Hey, Sean, so isn't it true that you've asked these folks for information before and they have been slow in forthcoming that information?
Oh, do you have something specific?
No, I just know when, when Mike was still with us and I went to the Planning Commission meeting, he said he'd had asked them for some information shortly after we discovered they were operating and they were not timely in providing that information or didn't provide it at all.
That may be the case and it might have been with him. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure of what information that he might have been referring to, but it may have been something outside of the, specifically the septic system thing. It might have been something else that he was referring to, but I, I don't know, maybe.
Okay, thanks.
Any more comments for Sean? I'm going to open up the public comment period, period for public hearing dash zero dash two oh, two four dash oh three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Typically, we ask, see if the applicant wants to make a presentation.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you to the county attorney. Setting the procedure here. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening to you all. My name's Mike Grothermell, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Spotsfein in Richmond. I just want to introduce a few people who are here with me tonight. My colleague, John Urbach, is in the front row here. Randy Powers, who's the property owner, is here as well. And then Joel Hughes, who is with Try Hope, he runs the recovery home, runs some other recovery homes as well. There's, I'm going to make, I'm going to summarize the application and some issues that, that we feel are important. My folks here are available to answer any questions that you may have. And then if possible, I'd like to, you know, reserve a couple minutes at the end to address any comments that have been made that we would, you know, feel necessary to correct. There's a few different ways to analyze and look at this particular application. I'm going to walk through them. I, I, but at the outset, I think it's important to note that we have made, for the record, we've made a, a request for reasonable accommodation under the Federal Fair Housing Act. And that's important for a number of reasons that I'm going to get to. So, but if you look at this case from purely a, assuming the validity of the county's ordinance, that, you know, for a halfway house, you have to go through a, a, a conditional use permit application. And I, and I will note at the outset that, you know, it's unfortunate we continue to use the word halfway house. I think that's been in the ordinance for a very long time. It's, it's, it's sort of an outdated term that has a lot of negative connotations. But if, 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 if you go through that process, the county has a number of review standards that need to be applied to conditional use permit applications. And we believe that if you apply those, this, this application should be granted. Now, I think you're going to hear from, you know, from, from some folks, I went back and looked at the, the planning commission video and I think you're going to hear that this is a business. This is not a business. It's a residence, it's a home, you know, if, and I think you're going to hear a lot of comments about, you know, this is the type of use that is absolutely necessary. It's an admirable cause, but just not here. But if not here, where? You don't locate these types of uses in a commercial area or an industrial area, they go in residential areas because they are residents, it's a house. It, it just happens to have as residents recovering addicts. And so when you look at this case purely from a land use and zoning perspective, if you look at the reasons that the planning commission set forth for recommending denial, if you look at the, the, the staff report, we don't believe there's anything in those, in, in those particular findings or recommendations that stem from a land use perspective. There's talk about building code issues. We recognize and, and, and accept the fact that if, if there are any building code issues, we don't believe there are. We need to, we need to address those. The, the state health department issues regarding the septic, we've agreed that those need to be accepted. My clients put that in process, the new septic system. Mr. Powers can talk to it directly, but that's supposed to be done by the end of March, so within a little over a month. I think there was a comment about administrative burden. We've offered to, to produce and submit all reports that our clients required to submit to bar directly to the county as well. The staff in its, in its staff report has recommended certain special conditions. We're fine with those. The, I think they, they recommended that the planning department be given inspection rights, no problem with that. They also included a, a condition that said the CUP would end with any change of ownership. I would not run with the land. And I think that's an important condition and we're fine with that condition. You know, normally I'm, I'm coming to zoning meetings on behalf of developers who are going to come in, they're going to get approval, they're going to put in infrastructure and they're going to flip the property. That's not the case in this situation. Joel Hughes, and you, you're happy to hear from him directly, runs, runs this home, he runs other homes as well. This, this is going to be him. This is not going to be flipped to anybody and we're fine with that condition that the staff has recommended. So when you look at the staff report as a whole, when you look at the, all the things that have been considered and have been discussed from a land use and zoning perspective, we don't think there's any ground to, to, to deny this application. And we have agreed, and, and I think Mr. Urbach first mentioned with the county attorney back at the end of January, that we would be agreeable to limiting the number of residents to twelve. You know, the one thing that struck me when I went back and watched the planning commission minutes or the, the video, the planning commission hearing, there, there was somebody that came up and said, you know, we, we were shocked that this, that this particular home had been there for almost a year. And really, that makes, that, that proves our point, that's exactly right. Because nothing, there was nothing to bring any attention to this particular home, there was no issue. There was no event that occurred or incident. It, it was, it was a house and it operated as such. Now, there's, let me segue into the second part of this now. There, there, there may be suggestions that, well, they should have filed an application from the start. My clients will come up, and Mr. Urbach and I have only been involved in this recently, but my clients will say, and welcome to hear from them, that they were not aware that they had to, that they had to come in or that the county expected them to come in and file a CUP application. This is a fairly unique ordinance, based in our research and, and review of some other surrounding and other Virginia localities. There, there are many localities that, that don't require that. And so this was nothing surreptitious on their part. You know, like I said, Mr. Hughes operates some other recovery homes. So they didn't, they weren't aware that the county wanted them to do that. When the county asked, please file an application, they immediately did that. But I need to point out that we don't, we don't, from legal perspective, we don't believe that, that they should have to go through a CUP application. If you look at the Federal Fair Housing Act, that act places disability discrimination on the equal footing with discrimination based on race, religion, and sex. And if you look at the Powhatan County ordinance, it is discriminatory both in its intent and its impact. And I think that as, as to this particular board, I don't think that, that you, this particular board enacted this ordinance. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming it's been in, in place for a while. But you look at the fact that, that the question was asked to, to the planner, what's the, the resident limitation? We don't believe there is any. So twelve people, whether it's twelve family members, twelve fraternity brothers, twelve unrelated people could come in and request or, or move into a house. They would not need to go through a land use process that asks for permission for them to move into a house. But the Powhatan County ordinance specifically requires a protected class and that is recovering alcoholics and addicts to go through this process. So we, we believe that under the Federal Fair Housing Act, this ordinance is invalid as it, it, as it's applied to, to, in, in general in its face and as to our client. But at the very least, we believe the, the county must make a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act. My colleague, Mr. Urbach, made a formal request. I don't usually abort a supervisor's meetings and zoning cases, site, site cases. It's not my, not my normal practice, but in this case, it's a little unusual and I, I think I just need to note it. We, Mr. Urbach noted this case in a communication with the county attorney. But the, the court in Oxford House versus the City of Virginia Beach, so Virginia case, observed that by defining discrimination under the FHA to include the refusal to make reasonable accommodations in rules, policies and practice, Congress contemplated providing localities the opportunity to adjust their generally applicable rules to allow handicapped individuals equal access to housing. So Mr. Urbach made this formal request for reasonable accommodation. And we don't believe the county has engaged. The county attorney's been, been very cordial in, in acknowledging the receipt of our communications, but we don't believe that the county has engaged in that. To the extent that you want to view this CUP process as a proxy for that, we're happy to discuss any other, any other conditions. We've, we've agreed to the conditions that the, the staff has proposed. If, if you want to discuss any others, we're happy to, to, to review and discuss those. But if the county denies the CUP and, and otherwise is unwilling to, to engage in the process contemplated under the FHA and agree to reasonable accommodations, my client has no choice but, but to, to file suit and pursue its remedies. And, and it does not want to do that. It wants to be a member of the community, is capable of being a member of the community. They've shown previously that they're, that they're able to do that in other communities. And so for all those reasons, you know, we would respectfully request that you grant the CUP. And if you're not willing to do that, we would, we would ask the board to consider deferring the case so that the county and the board can engage in the process contemplated under the FHA as far as reasonable accommodation. Happy to answer any questions, happy to bring my folks up to answer any questions regarding the operation of the home. And again, would appreciate, you know, an opportunity for a brief reply to any comments that are made that we would need to feel the need to, to respond to. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Powers.
I'm not sure who, who the appropriate person to ask. How, how is the house supervised?
Yeah.
You have, have twelve, twelve people in a house?
Sure.
How are they supervised?
Hello, how are y'all? I'm Joel Hughes, so I run Try Hope Life Ministries. So the house is supervised, we have three house leaders. So I have three house leaders here tonight. I've got Dave, he's Dave Ford, if you'll stand up. I have Marlon Turner and Mr. Raymond Dabney. Those are the three house leaders that are in our home. Mr. Dabney has been living and been a part of Try Hope Life Ministries for three years. And, and Mr. Turner has been a part of Try Hope Life Ministries for over two years. And Mr. Ford has been a house leader and been in the house for fourteen months. So we have house leaders in the home and they report to me, we talk every night. And so the supervision that happens there, we have them doing that. And we also have cameras all throughout the property so that we can monitor people coming and going. And not only do I monitor those cameras, but I also have another individual by the name of Brian Warren, who also monitors the cameras as well. So anything that happens on the property is, is, is visual by cameras and also through the three house leaders. I'd also like to say that it's supervised by the other house people that live there. It's an accountability and, and we, and they take it very seriously. And so nobody wants to, to see a person fall back into old behaviors and, and addictions. And so there's an accountability in the house that takes place. And, and so that's how the house is supervised.
Yeah. What's, what's the normal?
And can I mention one other thing, sorry? We have policies and. Uh, and can I mention one other thing? Sorry. We have policies and procedures. It's forty-nine pages, but we also drug test. So drug testing that takes place in the house happens weekly. So not only do we have weekly drug tests, we, we monitor those, we, we uh, we keep up with all of that. That's all documented. And any medications that are used in the house um are monitored, written down, locked away in a safe. Everything is counted, and we do that on a weekly basis. So there's a lot of supervision that's going on.
How, uh, how long's a typical resident in the house?
I'm sorry?
How long are they, are they, are they resident in the house? What, how long are they there?
So we don't have a graduation date. I don't believe in turnover. I think one of the things that hurts a person in recovery and in addiction is a, is, is, especially recovery houses, is a high turnover rate. The longer a person can stay in the home, the better chance that they have. Studies show that there's an eighty-five percent chance that a person will not relapse if they once are released from a program and they enter into the home, if they stay in the home for a year. And so their, their, their chances of relapsing are way, way higher is when they stay less. So on average, in this particular home, we are averaging about three hundred and thirty-five days. But there's not a date where I say, well, you have to leave.
Are all the residents gainfully employed?
Yes, yes. Our, our residents are gainfully employed. Uh, uh, we, what we do is when they first get out of jail and they come to us, we give them a five-week scholarship. Because that first week or two is, there's a lot going on. You know, you might have to report probation or whatever. It also gives them time to find employment. And so we want them to be employed. We want them to go to work, and that's important. And um, but we give them a five-week scholarship so they can find employment, and they don't have to feel like they're rushed to do it.
Your, the attorney mentioned that, 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 that it's not a business. Uh, I, I suspect probably some of it's a result of donation or out of the goodness of your heart or as a ministry, hence the name. But uh, how, how is it funded? I'd just be curious to know how, how you, how you make ends meet.
Right. So, so we're not a business. We are a nonprofit. Um, we do have support from churches, and we do have individual donors, and that's where most of our money comes from. And so that's how we are able to run it. As far as the houses are concerned, you know, i- if, if, you know, we look at it, we break even on that as far as rent comes in. So once they've lived in the house for a certain amount of time, we chart, we have rent, and um that rent pays for the houses.
Thank you.
I mean, if I could, I'd be very interested in some of the money that y'all are getting from the opioid uh settlement that y'all are getting, because you mentioned earlier that you were going to be looking at nonprofits. And so this county is going to get a, it sounds like a large sum of money. So I'm a nonprofit, and I would be very interested in, in receiving y'all's help with that.
More comments right now? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kenny.
So I, I do have a more of a comment, sir. I mean, um, trust me, I appreciate what you guys do. It's an emotional, my wife and I have run a divorce care ministry for over twenty years. But every church we ran it out, out of had rules. Palatine County has rules. You came into the county, you didn't contact one person about running your business, and we, the only reason we are here is because you didn't do that. And now you've got an attorney here threatening us with a lawsuit if we don't grant your CUP. That's what I don't appreciate. Thank you.
I'm gonna open up the uh public hearing now. For those that signed up, uh, three minutes as individual. Uh, Catherine Waycaster's first. If I say your name wrong, I apologize.
I've been called worse. Good evening. Uh, my name is Catherine Waycaster. I live at fifteen thirty Greenberry Road, and I'm a thirty, thirty-five-year resident of Palatine County. I support giving people a second chance. It is the rare family that has not been touched by alcoholism or drug addiction, including my own. Two of my uncles were incarcerated due to poor decision and alcohol use. When eligible for release, my parents opened our home and helped them get back on their feet. Living with a recovering alcoholic gave me empathy and a recognition of the importance of family and community support. There are several reasons I am opposed to the Hughes CUP. I will focus my comments on citizen safety and site selection. The Hughes Halfway House is operating as a nonprofit, private church-affiliated business without county sanctioned oversight and accountability. Historically, the majority of house, halfway houses are privately run and release no data to the public. The scant information that is available paints a troubling picture. Basic statistics, such as the number of houses and the number of people living in them, is difficult, if not impossible, to find. Many houses have poor living conditions with inadequate and poorly trained staff. Conditions often involve violence, abuse, neglect, and residents that walk away or escape. Even with the current minimal operating standards set by our state, our county staff has determined that providing oversight would be costly and limited in scope. Without accountability, we have no way of knowing who or what is coming into our county. The covert way this business was established, coupled with the inability to provide basic operating information to the planning commission, does not inspire confidence nor engender trust in their ability to safely and effectively manage a high-risk business. Selecting eighteen Stonehenge Farm Road as a halfway house location was a poorly researched decision, primarily because it's adjacent to a school bus stop in a residential neighborhood. And secondly, there are limited transportation options available in Palatine if you do not have a car or a driver's license. Pedestrian traffic going to and from the Shell Station requires that you stop when meeting oncoming traffic. There is little to no shoulder room from the Shell Station up to the Stonehenge Farm Road. Without access to transportation, people resort to alternative modes of transportation, such as walking, scooters, mopeds, and bicycles, all of which exacerbate the well-documented safety issues on the poorly constructed Page Road. For these safety reasons and more, this business is an exceedingly poor fit in our community and compounds the existing safety issues on Page Road. I would respectfully ask that you deny this CUP. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Edmund P. Wickman, Jr.?
And I will vary from them on one point raised by the presenters earlier, but I'm Edmund Wick. I'm a resident of twenty-four years on Stonehenge Farm Road. And my comments are offer, are offered in response to the request for a conditional use permit for the residential property at eighteen hundred Stonehenge Farm Road. My comments aren't about the medical, spiritual, or recovery needs uh for residents. My comments are about the location of a nonprofit business in a residential development zoned agricultural on a private road, not a public road, where most of the houses and residents are encumbered by deed establishing the conditions for development and a private road maintenance agreement for the upkeep of the road. Here's where I will deviate from my comments slightly. I was the person that called the county and asked why there were eight, seven to eight vehicles parked in front of this residence. I was the person that finally spoke to a previous board of supervisors member to get some indication of what was going on at this location. That's what brought this use of this property to the attention of this board and the planning commission itself. It is a nonprofit business that was started in February of twenty twenty-three without a CUP and with no regard to current zoning. It is a business, and I realize this was changed tonight, but it is, was a business that is allowing up to fifteen occupants and uh as a, as a maximum number. It's a business where Palatine County, at least as I understand, has no vetted requirements of operation for this facility. It is a business where the temporary inhabitants are provided by the Chesterfield Jail and the Sheriff's Department and is supported by a church that actually resides in Chesterfield County, not Palatine. In a response to why this property was selected at a public meeting, the applicant said, oh, well, it has a Mid-Ocean mailing address. Well, so do I, but I live in Palatine and pay Palatine County taxes. Was it thought to be in Chesterfield? The proposed use of the property as a recovery facility likely increases the risk of unwelcome behavior on Stonehenge Farm Road, private road, and the associated residents, some of which include children. The business also has the likely impact of reducing the property value of the current residences on Stonehenge Farm Road. In summary, the facts are, it's a business situated on a private road in a residential neighborhood where most of the residents are encumbered by a road maintenance agreement and prescriptive use of the property according to the zoning. These conditions are recorded in the deed book, and I won't go through all the page numbers. Considering my comments and the planning commission's assessment, I ask that you, the board of supervisors, to disrespectfully deny this request for the conditional use permit. If you would like copies of the documents on the deed and, and the road maintenance agreement, I do have a copy of that that I can make available as well as part of the record.
Thank you, sir. Next is Carl Schwinderman.
I do think that this, it, I do think the concept of this idea is a good idea, because I do think that recovering drug addicts do need to be a, need to have a place where they can be monitored careful, where they can be in a controlled environment and monitored to recover. I just think that my question is, could, would Palatine County be allowed to add a clause in there? Like, if it becomes, if the place becomes a, a problem crime-wise, could the, could the county shut it down like, like the hotels in Ashland? But I think that they should, like, if they do open, if they do open the institution, I think they should have it, have a policy where the, where they work with the Sheriff's Department in Palatine to keep track of any problems there, and as long as there's no problems, it should, it, it should be allowed to operate. But the minute it starts turning into a problem location, they should, the county could shut it down. But I think that the drug addict, the drug recovering addicts do need a place to recover and be monitored. So i- i- it's a nice concept.
Thank you, sir. Lawrence Durbin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Lawrence Durbin. I reside at fifteen eighteen Page Road in Palatine County. There's a tremendous need for facilities to help victims of the opioid epidemic across the United States and in Palatine County. I'm sure almost every one of us has been personally impacted or knows someone close to them that has been impacted by drugs or alcohol. I believe that the Hughes are sincerely trying to help people who need this type of support, but the applicant did not seek input or support from the surrounding residents before they began operating at this location. The applicant has been operating without complying with local ordinance for Palatine County for over a year. While the need for these facilities is nationwide, this program works in cooperation with the Chesterfield County Jail, and the participants come from within that system. The operation of a halfway house on Stonehenge Farm Road, which is a private road, is not appropriate for its location and is not compatible with the general character of the surrounding lands and uses allowed in the zoning uh with district where proposed. The property does not comply with all the other relevant county standards, such as the septic system. The only specific zoning standard for a halfway house in Palatine County that I know of is section eighty-three dash four thirty-two D five B that states any halfway house shall be located at least twenty-six hundred feet from any other halfway house. I'm not sure what relevance of this requirement is unless the county plans on approving multiple facilities in one location, like apartments or condominiums. The county should not approve any conditional use permits for these facilities until it adopts appropriate zoning standards that adequately protect the rights of the sound, surrounding residents and of the applicant. I urge this board to deny the applicant's request and immediately begin to develop appropriate zoning requirements for these facilities in the county. I thank you all for your service to the residents of Palatine County and for your time to listen to our concerns. And one additional point in response to a question that was raised earlier. The Planning Commission's staff recommendation report to the Planning Commission stated, "Many questions remain on how feasible the project is at the current location. The building department would need to approve a change of use. The status of its approval is not known until the application has been received. The layout of the building would then need to be, would then need to comply with the Health Department's standards." Because they were not getting the information that they had requested. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Weir.
Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Debbie Weir, and for over forty-five years, my husband and I have lived at fifteen oh one Page Road. We learned at the January fourth neighborhood meeting that this halfway house had been operating since February of twenty twenty-three without the county's knowledge and that there were fourteen men living there on a well-inseptic system designed for a three-bedroom, single-family home. We also learned that the septic system was in failure, and the property owner was in the process of having a new septic system engineered and installed to accommodate up to twenty people and still, and still without having a county-approved conditional use permit being issued. This is a money-making enterprise, because the residents living there are being charged rent at the rate of twenty dollars per day, per resident. At the proposed twelve residents, that's two hundred and forty dollars a day, one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars per week, seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars per month, or eighty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars per year. This is not counting any donations or grants that they may acquire. This enterprise is on a private road. However, there are no provisions in the CUP for this enterprise to contribute to the maintenance and upkeep of this private road. If this money-making enterprise that needs twenty-four-seven security cameras and is on a well-inseptic gets approved, the county should also require that a whole-house generator be installed as part of the conditions of the CUP. The owner of this property is a Chesterfield County Realtor that should have known he needed to contact the county to find out if his property can be used, rented, for specific use other than a normal three-bedroom, single-family home. The fact that this enterprise was brought into this location without the county's knowledge or going through the proper zoning approval process speaks volumes. This is a worthwhile and needed program. However, this program being in this particular rural, single-family neighborhood without adequate septic well and on a private road is not a proper fit for them or us. The applicant and landowner are taking advantage of our rural county, its small, overworked staff, and lack of ordinances. If approved, this type of use will require a great deal of monitoring oversight by the county to ensure the conditions laid out in the CP are being followed and not violated, which is an additional burden on a limited staff and our tax dollars. Remember, they did not contact the county before they began operations to see what, if anything, was required, and the county had to contact them after neighbors complained to the county. Please vote with the planning commission and the staff's recommendation to deny this conditional use permit.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike Hall.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, Mike Hall, I'm at seventeen forty-six Old Palatine Estates. And um, I just kind of want to address the uh, the, the elephant in the room, uh, which which has been, has already been mentioned, but I want to make it loud and clear. No one finds fault with the ministry. The ministry is a wonderful thing and, and everybody is in favor of what they do, what their program is all about. So understand, there's nothing, nothing against the ministry. It's merely the location. The elephant in the room to me is we have a pastor and his wife from Chesterfield. We live in Chesterfield. We have an agreement with his ministry to service the Chesterfield Police Department jail system. The inmates that go into his program, the, I think it's called HARP program, Helping Addicts Recover Progressively, is a Chesterfield program, Chesterfield Jail. So the inmates from the Chesterfield Jail come to Powhatan. The resources that they're, they might be consuming, which, you know, we've mentioned some of those, what are we getting back from just providing a service for Chesterfield, a Chesterfield need? It seems to me that this, this program should be in Chesterfield because that's where it starts. That's where it's churning. That's where it's generating. It's, it's people and it should stay in Chesterfield. Please deny this CUP. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Koch. Let's see, Sarah. Richard Ford.
How are y'all doing? Let's see, I'm a, I'm a resident of eighteen hundred Stonehenge Farm Road, one of the house leaders. I grew up upper middle-class family, struggled with addiction throughout my life. Got arrested. I was in Chesterfield County Jail. Waited seventeen months to get into the HARP program. It's a volunteer program, you know, no court order or anything. And because I was just tired of the way I was living and I didn't, I didn't know how to get any help. That's where I met Joel and Wendy and great people. They have played a big part of my recovery. And the reason I tell you that is because I think it's really important that these are people, including myself, that are looking for help. They're not, I mean, it's not court order. It's, it's, they're not forced to do this program. We want to help, right? And so I stayed in the HARP program for thirty-three months. Okay, become a mentor and everything. And then in that time, through that time, I'd worked with Joel and Wendy and, and wanted to come to their house. I think, look, I love Powhatan. It's great, right? I love the serenity of it. I love the peacefulness. And then that plays a part of my recovery. But being in the house, you know, with everybody that's volunteered to come, it's not like we're having to police these people. That's not what goes on. We, we watch each other, but you know, it's, 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 we hold each other accountable. Like, you know, if I see biggest thing we got going on at the house is dirty dishes in the sink, y'all. But so, I mean, I, I just think it's really important that, that y'all know that, you know, we invited people to come to the house and hang out with us, you know. We all have children for the most part, you know, we love, we, we love family. You know. And, and I think to turn a blind eye to, to this situation, I think would be real foolish. This is a problem. It's a problem across the whole United States, right? And then, and then it needs help. And where, and where, where, where do you put us? You know, I'm the same person that sits beside you at the restaurant. I'm the same person that stands beside you in the convenience store. Am I so bad? You know, that my children go to your school, my grandchildren. So I just, you know, I, I ask you to please, please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tori Ford.
Hello. So my address is one four two zero five Broad Oaks Court. I am in the Women's Recovery House for Tri-Hope. Um, I just wanted to say, like, this program has helped me tremendously. My dad, who just spoke, he is who influenced me to want to do this program. I seen how it worked for him and I was like, well, if it can work for him, then it's got to work for me. So I got into HARP. I begged to go into HARP. I got in there. I was in there for three months. I became role enforcer. I met Joel and Wendy through Bible study and church on Sundays and we formed a bond together and I begged Joel to come to his recovery house. And ever since I've been in that recovery house, my life has changed dramatically. Like, I've gotten a job. My relationship with my daughter is so much better. Like, this program works. We're here because we want to be here. We're not here because we're forced. We're here because we want to be here. We don't cause no problems. We actually have some Powhatan people that lived in Powhatan that are now in the recovery house that had an addiction problem. So it's not just Chesterfield. It's Powhatan people too. So that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Raymond Darwi Jr.
Good evening. I'm Raymond Dabner. I'm one of the house leaders. Had opportunity to know Joe Humes for almost thirty years. I'm seventy-two years old. I love doing what I'm doing to help other people that have alcohol and drug addicts. We be having everybody accountable. We watch them. Or we go to classes. So we just do so much to help each other. And it's a good program. When I lost my wife three years ago, I didn't know what I was going to do. And Joe Humes got me to where I'm at today. And I wouldn't have it no other way to do what I do and to help other guys. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, sir. Marlon Turner.
Good evening. I'm Marlon Turner. I'm a resident at eighteen hundred Stony and Farm Road. I am state certified as a peer recovery specialist, community health worker, certified in mental health first aid, amongst other things, gainfully employed by George Mason University and I work at the Chesterfield County Jail. My main focus is the opioid crisis and harm reduction. This is what I do on, on a daily basis. And I found out that as individuals, we can make a difference, but as if we collaborate as a community, we can make a global impact. So again, I mentioned that because I, I heard what you said earlier about the opioid crisis and I respect it one hundred percent. And I'm sure many other peoples appreciate what you're doing. It's wonderful. I was entered into Joe's home in the year twenty twenty-one. I became a house leader in twenty twenty-two. It's the furthest thing from a halfway house or treatment facilities. It's a recovery house, but it's more of a, a welcoming for individuals who want to do something different with their lives. No matter where we're coming from, whether it's jurisdictions, other states, other cities, it's actually individuals who have asked to come to the home from other countries. So I don't think jurisdiction matters. We have a few guys that are actually from Powhatan, born and raised, that are in the, in the home as we speak. And I would, I just the guys and, and the home is not a leper colony. It's not. I, I, it's, it's a lot of language that, that I hear. They're stereotypical. It's stigmatic. It's harmful. And again, I say that because I'm all about harm reduction and that, that, that's verbal or physical. And I would, I would, I would ask you to look at or appreciate other individuals that live outside of Powhatan County to look at Powhatan County and have a view of Powhatan County as a place of refuge. People are trying to escape the hustle and bustle and, and, and the, the dangers and the harms of, of everyday life in areas where they were born and raised and are trying to find a place of refuge and they're finding it here. And, and, and are growing. And that's a beautiful thing. I just would actually just take that into consideration.
Sir. Nicholas Zebra.
Yes, my name is Nicholas Zebra. I live at seven one one two Walford Avenue in Richmond. I'm not in Mr. Hughes's house. I go to the same church and I was in jail with most of these gentlemen and went to his classes. The house that I'm currently in has no house leader, has no cameras. We have a urine test once a month. And we've also never had a fight. Never had any sex offenders living there. And I know that, that these gentlemen aren't, nobody else in the house is. So saying that it's, you know, you're worried about families and whatnot, you know, that's not a thing. And technically that is discrimination because you're profiling it based on just them being people coming out of jail. And they're, they truly are amazing people. You know, I don't know who all in here is Christians or whatnot. If you're not, you know, I'm sorry you have to hear it. But you know, when Jesus came back, he was, he was sitting with tax collectors and people that were, you know, murdering Christians, you know? And, and, and that's where he chose to spend his time in helping those people. And for people to just take a look at somebody, and I understand, you know, before I went down this road, which, you know, I, I come from a nice house. I lived in the country. I lived in Surrey County and, and Prince George. I went back and forth. But before I, I went down this road, I had the same view of addicts and alcoholics and whatnot as dirty people, bad people. But you know, they're just like everyone else in the room. We just made some, some bad mistakes, man. And we paid our time and now we're trying to get better. And you know, we, we walk enough of a, a struggle every day anyway, you know? Y'all are already getting money from the county for, for opiate issues, you know, so I don't, I don't understand, you know, if, if y'all are already receiving money because y'all know y'all have an issue with it, why not accept a recovery house that's, you know, an amazing recovery house for real compared to ninety percent of the other recovery houses? You know, if another recovery house moves in here, you know, they're, they're not going to operate like these guys. These guys have counselors. They got house leaders. They got cameras. They've got stuff to protect y'all and them, you know? But anyway, that's just my two cents, y'all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Angela Sebra.
Hello, my name is Angela Sebra. I'm from ten five hundred Lawyers Road in Prince George. This is my son. I've, I myself have never been drunk or high a day in my life. And I truly didn't understand what addiction was all about. Until, I mean, I've, I've seen it throughout my life. I've seen family members throughout my life, but I didn't understand it until I had to watch my own son actually in addiction, full-blown addiction, what was happening to him. I've, I have one son that's died of an overdose and watching my other son go through the addiction was, was pretty rough. And I had nowhere to go. I hadn't, I didn't have anybody I could find out where to go. How do I handle this? What can we do? I begged him to go into, to recovery and he went into several recoveries. And as soon as he got home and was back on his same playgrounds, it was all, all the way back to the races. When he got into HARP, he told me, you know, mom, I'm where I'm supposed to be. Don't worry about me. God's got a plan for me and I can't tell you how many people coming through here that I've heard say this. So to have these people that have this desire to want to know God and to, to have recovery and to get out of this is a blessing for your, your area because you have somewhere to go when, when, you know, these, it addiction is going to hit here, whether you want it to or not. It's not something any of us have any control over because it's a beast of its own. But when it comes into your, your environment and your homes and you don't have anywhere, you're in my old shoes where I didn't have anywhere to go, what are you going to do? Right now, you can knock on their door. Joel, you know, give us some help. But you know, this, this, this whole, whole thing of they're from somewhere else, they're this, they're that. Well, they're all working. They're paying into your, your environment. They're paying into your taxes because they're employed and they're having to pay taxes to you guys. The house itself is paying income taxes, the, the rest, real estate taxes. I'm sorry, you are getting income from them. These, they're, as far as, is, you know, them needing transportation, well, you were, they were complaining because there were too many cars there. They have transportation. They're not the ones walking on the road. They're, they're, they have their transportation to get them where they need to be. Joel, I know, I have seen them go places where he has, has made accompaniment to have multiple people in one van at a time going to the same location and getting them where they need to be when they need to be there. You know, Joel and Wendy, they're doing a wonderful thing for these people and I thank you guys for doing this for them. I appreciate that because without these people, without the, the, the members in this group, my son may not be alive today. But he's got them to refer to. He's got them to talk to. They have camaraderie. They, you know, living in the house like this, they know each other's tells. They know what they're, what's going on because they've been there. They have been in addiction and they can support and help get them through this. They have somewhere to go. Man, I've got a problem. This happened today and they can talk it over with each other. And that helps them get through it. And instead of going out and using, they rely on each other. And I just want you guys all to know that I care about you. I love you. You matter. You mean something. No matter what is decided here, which I would like for you to approve it because I didn't have the resources that are coming to you for my child. But I want you to know that I feel like this should pass because these people here matter. They make a difference. They mean something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Last person, Elizabeth Scolero.
Good evening. I am Elizabeth Scolero and my address is fourteen hundred Citation Drive. I have been an educator for twenty-three years now. I have my degree and my bachelor's from VCU in art education. I also have my advanced placement from the Chicago Institute of Art. And I, for the past three years, I have had the blessing of being an art therapist for Tri-Hope Ministries. So I get to work with these amazing people all the time. And I'm, I'm beyond thankful that weekly I get to serve and teach and sharing the joy of, of living life together. Joel and Wendy Hughes, if I could speak to their character for a minute, are exceptional people. They are people of integrity. They invest not only their time, their talent and their love into people, but they truly walk the walk. They're not just talking about caring about people and things that we've got to do. They live it out every day in, in the hardest of circumstances and it's, it's nothing but impressive. And I love serving with you. What an opportunity you guys have been given here in Powhatan. And Dave said it best and it actually teared me up how Powhatan is a place of peace and serenity. Amazing. I mean, Virginia's amazing, but we have, you know, the land that we have and the, the beauty of the places that we can offer people in situations that come from different in situations that come from different backgrounds or different situations. It, it's amazing. And you guys have been given an opportunity to offer an outstanding organization a seat at your table. And that's, that's incredible. What an opportunity you guys have been given and, and it's, it's a joy to see. The recovery home is, is a community of people and, and they're amazing people. Each one has a different story to tell, just like we all do. But they work really hard together. They love each other well. They're very disciplined. They go to classes weekly. Each night has different classes that they're assigned to. There's really not a lot of time for them to do much else other than work and go to classes. And Joel and Wendy both take a lot of time to make sure that, you know, the training and the classes that they go through help with things like equestrian therapy, art therapy, finances, organizational skills. All these different things that they care about that they know are beneficial for helping anybody in any situation. So I hope you approve this and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. That's everyone I have on the list. If anybody came in late and would like to speak on this, you're welcome to come forward. Seeing anybody, we'll close the public comment period. Open it up for board discussions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Natty.
I want to thank everybody for coming up and speaking. It's a very emotional topic for a lot of people and a lot of people have a lot of passion for that. So thank you all for, for being able to do that. Sometimes it's very, very difficult. It's a, it's an emotional topic for me. My, my grandfather spent a lot of years in, in different ministries and halfway homes and recovery homes and prison ministry and things like that. And I also have some family that was on the other side of that, receiving the recovery. So it's, it's definitely an emotional topic for me very, very much. I had the opportunity to go to the, the community meeting, which I want to say there was probably between fifty and fifty-five people there. It was very informative. Mr. Powers had us there and Joel, you guys do a lot of great things. Joel is really, really incredible. The statistics that you provided for your home versus the national standard was eye opening. So I apologize for that. What you guys do is absolutely incredible. I, I will tell you that I've gotten to know all these people up here over the last six to eight months. And I know their heart. I know who they are. And I think when it comes to what you guys are trying to do, I don't think anybody here thinks that's a bad idea. I don't. But one of the things that we're not going to do is we're not going to be a group of people that are going to be defined by, that they apply an unequal application of our ordinance. That's what I have a problem with. That's kind of where it stops for me. I don't feel like when we have staff that, that deny this and they give us reasons. We have an issue with the home or the placement where it's located. I think that's, that's really where it's at for me. When we have rules, when we have permits for a reason. That's where it's at for me. I love what you guys do. I think everybody would probably echo the exact same thing. But we have ordinances, we have steps that we have to take. The recovery home is an excellent, excellent opportunity. And I, I think we would all probably back you up and trying to make sure that we follow the right steps in the future to find you an excellent location.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Powers.
I have, in my experience when I've lived in Lynchburg, have dealt with a, a close, close friend who has two such recovery homes there in the city of Lynchburg. And I, I'm very well aware of how it's run, what they do. And as a matter of fact, as, as this morning, I talked with him at, at some length to, to get some insight from him in terms of what experience he's had and how the community responded. If he's had any issues and how he handles the, the rules and regulations of the house. And his description sounds exactly like what I've heard tonight from y'all in terms of the way you operate yours. Coming into tonight, I, I, I got a fairly taken up with the, the notion of the process that wasn't followed. And everybody being unhappy with the process not being, not being followed. I don't want to be, have to go back and, and look at myself in the mirror tonight or tomorrow morning and, and think that I threw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak. So I'm, I'm having a real hard time here tonight considering this situation. I came into it with a bit of a different perspective. And I'm wondering, and I'm not sure if discussed this with any of my board, my colleagues here. But there are a number of issues that haven't been addressed that we have statements of commitment to address. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't consider, and I hate, I hate doing this, pushing things down, down the road and kicking the can down the road. But I'm wondering if, if it might behoove us as a board to give this a bit more thought and consideration. And to hold the applicant to feet to the fire. They've committed to doing certain things. And while I don't doubt their word, proof's in the pudding and I like, I like much more to have it done. And I can point to it. And I think there's some other things that have been mentioned tonight that by some of the, the folks have spoken in terms of other, other proffered ideas, other things that we might ask the applicant to consider. So not, not as emotional certainly, but more as a, as a, to ask my colleagues for kind of their, their thoughts in terms of whether we want to push this down, to push this out to next month and give this, give us some time to to give this a bit more thought.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kenny.
So to echo Mr. Denati's thoughts, guys, mom said there'd be nights like this. When I ran for supervisor, you know, you gotta separate the people from the policies. I mean, my wife and I, again, I, I have a cousin that died, fourteen years old, from a drug overdose. Had a good friend that died at thirty. So we relate to totally to what you're going on. The problem is just like God's word says, he's got rules, he's got commandments, so does the county. And y'all didn't follow them. You know, when you opened up the halfway house, you didn't, one thing that really attracted me to this county is the minute, is the people. Because I have never lived anywhere where the people of a county were more than willing to bend over backwards to help you no matter what. But nobody made a phone call, not one. And, and you went from February to September. And the only reason that we're here is because somebody called previous supervisor and discovered you guys were running this facility without permission. I mean, I'm sorry. The county has rules. Chesterfield might not. Goochland doesn't, might not, but this isn't Goochland or Chesterfield. This is Powhatan, yeah. And unfortunately, as a supervisor, I have to separate the stories from the people. It's not about the people. It's about the policies, period. And, and this is just a food for thought for you, sir. I, I'm a born again believer. My wife and I have been following Christ for over thirty years. But, and, and I know you said your folks have rules they got to follow, but what kind of example are you setting by not following the rules? And, and, and that's why I, I'm, you know, probably vote to deny the CEP.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I respect what my colleague has just said and, and in many ways I agree with him. I'm reminded of the fact that I walk around with a plank in my eye. And so I, I need to be careful about judging others. And not saying that you, not saying that you are. Don't misconstrue what I'm saying. And I think you, you did wrong. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, not saying you, you did it the right way. You didn't. But when, when I perceive you come before this board asking for consideration, forgiveness, you haven't used that word, but, but that's what I hear. I, I'm hard put not to forgive you and not get caught up in the process that you didn't follow as opposed to looking at what you're trying to do for other human beings. So I'm, I'm not declaring how I'm going to vote. I'm just telling you, I'm, I'm, I'm just feeling troubled with, with having to, to cut this, you know, slice this baby up. It's just, it's just, you know, that's why they pay us the big bucks, I suppose. So that's why we're here. But I'm, I'm having, I'm having some difficulty with it, quite frankly. And, and I think, again, you, you know, in a spirit of, of quote unquote forgiveness, you know, you've come to us, you said that we, we didn't do it the right way, admit that. And we're going to take some steps to correct things. Once again, I would, I would, I would like to give it a little more time and, and see if you, man of your word and whether you correct those situations and then come back and maybe give it consideration.
Yes, it leaves me. Yes, sir, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry. There was no ill intent on my part to miss this. There was none. We had a conversation, Mr. Powers and I, and I looked all through Powhatan County's ordinances. I missed it. Maybe I missed halfway house because I wasn't looking at halfway house. I was looking at recovery house. But whatever, listen, I'm sorry. I want to especially look at you and say that I'm sorry I missed it. Sorry to Powhatan that I missed it. I have not tried to do anything to hurt anybody in this room. I don't want to hurt anybody. And I certainly want to make sure that your families are safe and doing, and our guys are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So anybody here from Powhatan, I apologize to you in that I missed it. But if given an opportunity to correct it, we will correct it. I have a, a rule that I live by. I'm not losing, I'm learning. And so I'm learning in this process. And I actually believe that we have a great opportunity here to do something special. And we could be something that's cutting edge. And I am more than willing to sit down with anybody, this board, planning board, citizens of Powhatan County, sheriff's office, anybody, because we have a problem on our hands. I want all of you to know that over the last six weeks, I've gone to two funerals. Both of those funerals were in Powhatan County. Both of the residents were Powhatan County residents who died of an overdose. So I'm here and I'm willing to put in the work in the effort to see this through and that we can do something special. So please accept my apology. And I really would recommend that we can defer it. Let's talk about it more. And I'm willing to sit down with any neighbors and talk and let's, let's have an open dialogue on how we can make something special. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, one more thing. I, I want to make it clear to anybody that has the paperwork, I'm not related to Mr. Powers in any way, shape or fashion that I know of. So I want to put that out there first. And I want to ask the sheriff, since I see him here, has the sheriff department had any occasion to have to go out to this, this, this home? Any issues? But no issues of any, of any note?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Natty.
Thank you for your comments. I, I still fall, fall back on that. I just don't want to be labeled as a group of people that applies unequal application of a ordinance for our county. I feel like we need to fix it moving forward. We need to stand behind what, what our staff stands behind. I mean, we all, we all stand behind Brett. He has a, a unique ability to position well and we stand behind him and, and his staff. We want to be a group of people that sees something that we can correct and fix it moving forward. I, I feel like it's a slap in the face if we approve this to everybody that's jumped through the appropriate hoops before and got approved correctly.
I'm going to speak now. Um, I applaud what y'all doing. I applaud the church, the, everyone that's involved. But it comes back to the issue of, like my colleagues say, not properly processed in any way, shape or form. The most important thing that, that gets to me is my own sheriff sitting back there did, was not aware of this halfway house in Powhatan County. That's what disturbs me the most. There was a lot of violations that are there. And like I say, I applaud what y'all do. I applaud everybody that spoke. I appreciate it. I think my, all of my colleagues have said it best and I am the one else has the comments, we can have a roll call vote. The emotion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to deny the conditional use permit.
Second.
Mr. Denati.
Is it, is it I for the no vote? Aye.
Mr. Powers.
No.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mrs. Morissette.
Aye.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
It brings us to our second public comment period. No one has signed up for this period. Brings us to county attorney comments.
No comments, Mr. Chair.
County administrative comments.
No further comments.
Board comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I do have a few comments if I could.
Right, yes, sir.
I serve on the Community Action Agency. I wanted to give a quick update on, on that organization. Twenty-first of March, one o'clock, the meeting of the Community Action Agency will be held at Fast Feet Academy. Is sponsoring that. And everyone on the board is invited to attend, as is the public. So I encourage you to, to take part and understand what community action is doing here in Powhatan. They are in the midst of a needs assessment, which will be completed by the first of July. And all of us on the board will be asked to have input to that. I'm also on Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, ex officio. And I want to report to all of you that we're, that that organization is in the midst of a, doing a trail master plan. Earlier today, you saw on the screen the QR code to take a survey addressing the community center feasibility study. I encourage those of you who haven't to do so.
addressing the community center feasibility study. I encourage those of you who haven't to do so. And the Parks and Rec is involved in many new programs and events. Finished a coaches clinic program for basketball, baseball and softball, and the clinics were held at the Parks and Rec. Forty-five coaches attended. They have upcoming events, leprechaun, scavenger hunt, egg hunt, doing things that scavenger hunts on three fifteen and the egg hunt on three thirty. And the you may have seen in social media, the department is conducting an anti nicotine program for teens. And the last last thing, which I think is a wonderful thing, that the the small park improvements, a safety and ADA assessment was performed at performed at Fighting Creek Park and by Public Works and all the issues that were found there have been rectified. So just wanted to report back to everybody on those those groups that I have been assigned to and enjoy meeting with and that they're making a contribution to Powhatan County. They'll be applauded for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.